President, this is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, for one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and justice for all.
Thanks, Patrick.
Any additions or corrections or you may have any comments on the agenda before we begin?
I do not.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, the December tenth minutes.
And we always see them, right?
No liquor license. And there's no liquor license.
Public health revenue was on that. Is it an agenda motion or do we have a separate?
It's under consent. And it's the revenue they brought in.
Okay, perfect. I will second that.
Don't we have to have a special resolution for that? Or it doesn't consider it an agenda?
We have a motion to approve the agenda as received, minutes as approved or presented, resolution twenty-four dash forty-seven, public health revenue, and we have no liquor license. Any questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Public comment a week later. I attended two or three meetings last week. One of them was nine-one-one. The biggest dilemma we have is, I'm just gonna use the person's name. Sharp Blades has been very reluctant to put in bills timely, like three years. Just to take care of our tower ground and things like that. It's grown to quite an amount. And I haven't talked to the county attorney, what, you know, can, are they allowed to come in that late with bills? I mean, they didn't present anything back when they did the work. They're just now presenting a bill from three years ago.
And the reason is?
Travis, can I have?
What? I, I think there's a handful of things, you know, that were kind of brought up with me. Now, this was prior to me, you know, being here. It would have been during Larry and Susan's tenure. And to my knowledge, it was, hey, we need you invoice us, you know, and it just never occurred. So when I started to notice these things, like, you know, people on board, it was like, hey, we're gonna need like a formal agreement in place. And then it was, hey, this is what is due from the previous two to three years. I took it to the county attorney and of course, in guidance, and they said, we can establish like a repayment, you know, kind of plan, whether it's monthly installments or annual over the course of however many years. Or we can, you know, if they don't want to do that, if they're wanting to have like one lump sum immediately kind of thing, then we'll go about, you know, if you didn't invoice us, invoice us at a timely manner, then of course, it's not gonna repay it, that kind of thing.
What kind of money are we talking about?
Right around twenty-eight thousand dollars. So that's, that's basically-
Twenty-eight thousand dollars, and he hasn't submitted a bill till now?
Three, three to four years worth of work, yes. Yeah. So-
Isn't he the one that does the beautiful courthouse?
But he's, we are not the only entity that's having trouble with this. There's other entities that he does work for. He can't build a facility. And I don't know how he stays in business, but anyway, that was just one of the topics that was brought up and discussed at the nine-one-one meeting. And the budget and stuff is, really looks pretty good for the coming year on that one. Emergency management, the following night, nothing too off the record or anything, you know. Asking was coming in less than the previous year. The other one I attended was public health, well, not public health, veterans affairs. They are going to be asking for a, I told them it wouldn't work. I says, don't even think about it. They want a raise of ten to twelve percent for one employee and, because they don't feel she's being paid enough money. So I said, you can ask, but I says, I don't think, you know, it's gonna work.
It's not gonna work.
I'm gonna quit there and we'll hear all about it later.
Last week was a bittersweet week for me as I am saying goodbye to all my boards and that sort of thing. Amber and Mayor Winquist and I went to a MAPPA council event, which was wonderful, was at the Beardmore Center. And it was, the speaker was Lieutenant Patrick Solacek. And it was very, very interesting. Not only are they interested in Mills County putting in solar, they're not saying yes or no. They wanna know who's the company because of China. They're afraid that there may be a chip that they can see what's going on with Stratcom. And of course, we're very proud that it is close by, but they're very worried. So they gotta be very, very interested in what Mills County's putting in for solar. And that's what they, it was a very good topic. A lot of people was very interested. And Mayor Winquist and I, we really perked up on some of the added benefits that maybe some military families coming in for the school system, they kind of get a special discount, some extra stuff for the county. So we're gonna look into some of that. As the board has selected last week, that Mayor Winquist will replace me as vice chair on the MAPPA board. And the council, the MAPPA council, they reached out. And it is the mayor trainer of Hathaway is going to replace my job, which I was vice chair on the council. And Richard is going to, was voted in to replace me as vice chair on the MAPPA finance. Then Thursday, last Thursday, I had a meeting in Harlan. And Mayor Winquist will replace me on that board. And Friday, last Friday, was my Golden Hills, which I was selected to stay on that board. So just some bittersweet things to have to say goodbye. And Golden Hills doesn't want me to leave, so I was honored tourism. They had their vote and I will still stay on tourism. So it will still be interesting that I can continue some of my projects that I've started. So it was a full week and it was very honoring to hear of all the things I have done. And they don't wanna see me go, but it's time to go. So with that, that was my week.
I have one more thing to add from VA. This is done by an independent company. They keep track of the amount of dollars that are brought into the county by veterans. What they have to spend here, what they do spend. Right now, we're averaging one point one million dollars from what VA people bring into Mills County. But right now, like thirteen point six million dollars for the year, so.
Like, what do you mean by the expense? For groceries and gas and-
Gas, rent, anything they want. It's done by an independent source. We just get a report from them. And Elizabeth is very good about keeping us up on top of that. So I think that's very important that, you know, being we're across from opus, and the amount of VA people that come and stay in Mills County, the amount of money they have, it's a lot of money that, you know, we don't have to put out in taxes and things, so.
Absolutely. Okay.
Your page turned over here.
Did your name appear with this?
The Hapson? No.
The Friday people.
All right. Well, thanks. And both for you.
Okay, so opportunity came up. Trent Moore, his red road foreman, his dad has some oil tanks and hose rails, pumps and everything that he's willing to sell as a thousand dollars for the pair. They're about eighteen hundred dollars individually. They're purchasing somewhere else. These are going to the mountain shop, so they'll just make, we never had them up there, they just make a lot easier for them to receive. So request to be able to write him a check for a thousand dollars, even twenty-two, or ten, just to see if it's enough.
And there be, there won't be a problem with like FS or Co-op or anybody like that coming in to fill the tanks and stuff with the oil? They're all right with that?
Yeah. We have them here at the shop.
Capitalism, just like, 'cause I know mine, I have two FS Co-op will fill. My own, it don't make a difference. I never got oil from them, so it doesn't bother me any. I just hope we weren't getting tightened down.
Yeah, no issues. Thousand dollars? Yeah, versus eighteen hundred, the pair submitted up thirty-six hundred, including the purchase of the most moved people.
I second that.
Got a motion made in seconded to approve the purchase of oil tanks and hose reels for a thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Are you none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, driveway entrance variance for Jeff Cruz at two hundred and fiftieth street. It's on two hundred and fiftieth?
Yeah.
In north of his place, right?
On two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, this is it. So he owns this field in the south. This is his neighbor's property, so he has to come in here. This is how he's been accessing this field, just through his neighbors. He didn't have an entrance himself. Looked on Beacon, there's no sales report, so I don't think this is ever been screened like this is. This is in partial. But he's wanting to get his own entrance in. You can see this is probably really a road in the past. And that's about the safest place we can put it. We don't have the added footsight distance. We have about five hundred feet. According to our, our regulations, we'd be six hundred and ten. So we're a little bit short, but since it's existing, we do owe them an entrance. And this is the safest place we can come up here. Added footsight distance in the south is just north coming through here. It is just for funding, it's not for new development or anything like that. So that, you know, there's a pile that's on my note, it's not major traffic coming out.
Oh, maybe, how many feet is that from?
From that one?
Yeah.
Yeah. It would've.
Okay.
So we're probably two hundred and fifty feet, I'm sure.
Okay.
But like Lonnie said, our separation, we put fifty feet in there.
So does he have to have a two in there? Do we put two in there?
We always give them, if it needs a two, we'll give them a quote for it. And then they can choose to use our quote, want to hire them.
I would make the motion to approve the entrance variance, we're just going to turn it fifty.
Yeah, looks like the safety is good, sight distance. I second that.
We do not have sight system, it's the best part of it.
Okay.
Because we, per ordinance, they are a lot of their requirements.
Safe is way to get in and out if you want to put trucks on that side of the road too, you know, for them to get in and out. There instead of coming up out of it.
We're not supposed to have farmers' park concert, really.
I didn't hear that.
Duly noted.
Never been there.
Oh, maybe my booth's been with no parking site, play that.
Been a motion made in seconded to approve the variance for Jeff Cruz on two hundred and fiftieth street. Any further discussion, objections, anything? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. On the agenda, safety meeting.
So this is just under general discussion. I, we are having our safety meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Because you're welcome to attend. Hot lunch, of course.
Whoa, 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 what time? Yeah, I'm gonna keep coming to these, we're gonna get by them.
They're, they're pretty awesome. These guys are good chefs.
Might hitch you up for a little bit of safety talk, though. Got some time to fill that. Yeah, well, get that, we're gonna touch on-
Down at the shop.
Yep, down at the shop, we're gonna touch on, always do county updates, kind of different projects we're working on, some version form. We'll do work zone activities, set up traffic control. We're gonna kind of do some interactive, get into groups and kind of work through some different scenarios. Go over some brush pattern and then learn making things. Touch on all those. We do have a skid loader that is being lent to us by John Deere so that we can demo it. Cause we haven't the budget to purchase a new skid loader this year. We got three clothes, Bobcats, John Deere and Cat. John Deere came in significantly lower on the bid, so we're gonna actually-
They must like you.
They must.
Really?
Almost twenty-five thousand dollars cheaper than Cat.
That's, that's significant.
It's a big one, too. And so what we're doing, we're planning ahead, if any future budget allows, to get a rotary vulture drone, forest tree drone, for a skid loader for the higher end program. And those take big skid loaders. So they, we can't just go buy that piece of equipment and fit on a skid loader we have now. So the next skid loader we're gonna get is the big one so that we have it in place if they ever do.
You know what they're really good for is pull trees, so you can pull trees out of ditches.
We have that, though.
Oh, okay.
With our grant, we got that tree pole. And they've been using it all. Yeah. Yeah, it's the rip off.
Yeah, drop them off in the crouches, he likes to burn those.
I can guarantee you, you can pull them all, Barry, and next year you'll have one just like this one. Somewhere in that system, it will come back.
Those are, is that honey locusts that do-
Honey locusts the same way.
They-
Those trees are smarter than they.
Yes, they are.
Tore them.
They are. Our ground is just perfect for seeds.
We'll have it tomorrow first, so we'll definitely get it in there, probably work on the field, but I'm just gonna get. Really, really, we know it's got more power than it would have. We're gonna go work to make road re-govern again. Again, that one is more of just comfortability looking, sure looking controlled.
I am coming.
Good. Yeah.
It's just another thing our wife does, you know?
Christmas party on Monday and birthday on Tuesday.
She'll bring in donuts next week.
You know, I always bring the ones that are here.
And that's at the county party.
Yeah, it's up here.
Yes.
Big tree tree, yeah. So I have a reporter, we've been talking about the winter storm, working session.
Can we bring, bring that up here a little bit, it takes too much longer.
But then you think that'll be something for the month long?
Sure.
I'd say an hour, like thirty.
Okay. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go check that.
We have no, we have no schedule time, right?
I was gonna say.
I'll leave and come back then. Hey, I'll go check the versions down on YouTube. So I'll go check those and probably run that to them.
Yes.
All right.
Sounds good.
Sheriff Schultz. I don't know, Amber sent me an email this morning. We've done ECC in the jail. They don't have an answer for you there in a few days, like a week. I have not heard back from them to say that they're complete. I know that they, we've been satisfied, we've been checking the ones that they replaced. The tree that they replaced that were our biggest issue. And they were coming back in to do the rest of them this last week, the two days during, the Friday, Wednesday, Thursday. But I don't know, I haven't heard from jail staff if there's any issues with those. So I would, I'll get you an answer, but I would assume that everything's done to a satisfactory. We had a chance to talk to them about it, ECC done it at ISSDA a couple of two, two C over there. And they were very receptive, they completely stand. They have terminated the entire project crew that did our project, which was a prime fox, because of the workout that they did. Kind of like seven to eight. So we, they've definitely taken notice. They know we're holding about a hundred thousand dollars from them. And they prefer to be paid, the two guys that have been down have been fantastic to work with. So hopefully that project is done. But I'll, I'll get back to you next week.
You wanna hire a jailer for, bring him up probation?
Yes, bring him up probation. That's the, the names. They'll get to me someday.
Sure.
I don't, I don't remember who it is, though. Yes.
You're from salary to, to salary, yeah? Cool. Be per union contract.
Yeah, yes, cool.
I would make the motion to move the detention officer off of probationary to his standard salary for the union contract.
Sheriff, could you bring that in next week as numbers, also, maybe, if you can know exactly what-
Pretty handy to throw a little file to. That's, it's, see, my fault, of course.
Okay, that's fine. And I second that. It's just nice to know- Yeah, I understand. I did.
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry.
A motion made in seconded to remove a person from probationary to detention officer as per union contract. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yeah, if you wanna come back in about, about an hour.
Okay. I'll put, I'll put in the year now.
Go let your hanger up. You keep that guy in shape, though.
I've heard short.
Probably true.
Not yet. Who's gonna stop by when he got done?
Uh, the employee that's going from probation to regular pay is Tiffany Pace. P-A-C-E.
Salary?
Getting there.
Okay.
Working on it.
Okay.
My pass will slip over to. Let's slip over to Miss Lewis, you wanna come up?
Yes. Good morning.
How are you?
Doing well, thanks. Me again today?
You see in your face here. Breaking up the room, you know?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm working, I'm working on giving you that.
Thanks.
All right, we're four, forty-six, seven, forty.
Forty-six, four.
No, forty, forty-six, seven, forty.
You know, that's related to a TV.
I think I can. Yes. I even signed it.
And did you write a letter?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Should be in the tag other.
I don't see it. Oh. Very good. Okay. Um, so we talked about this last week, um, and the, uh, supervisors, you know, are always behind. It's a wonderful program. We think this is a super thing, not only for the county, but for, um, how wonderful Switch has just taken off train this year. So glad that we've got some ARPA funds that we can continue this. And with that, I take a motion to approve the request for the ARPA funds, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that's for the switch, um, program. Is that gonna go into anything special?
Well, we're gonna leave it unrestricted right now because we're not sure what the priority is there, so. We had a joint board meeting with Easton, so we talked about those things.
Okay.
So it could go to several different projects.
Good.
But we'll follow up and let you guys know what we did with it.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll get this part for you, Will.
Send the motion.
There, a motion made and seconded that we approve the request of fifty thousand dollars from ARPA funds because of the switch program. Any further discussion? Comments? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, there's a couple of questions for down the road. Um, is there an orange cone program that people get rid of old orange cones? If so, we would love to take ownership of those. You wanna donate them?
How many would you like?
Um, I need to talk to the CEO and straight to her, so.
Probably get you a couple. Let you take a few too.
Yeah. So if it's, if it's just that you're rotating some out, getting new, we would like to. Cause what they do is they use them to back up.
Yeah.
And show the ranges and, you know, first one too last week. So sorry. We were certified. The range ones, I would do.
I would even hit the DOT, I was like, they said, they said so many out and drivers combined, hit them and drag them down.
That's a great idea.
They don't have the perfect, so.
Do you have the name of the DOT?
No, I don't.
Lonnie knows.
Uh, right offhand, I'm going blank.
Their camera, she can now.
Buddies, hip to hip.
Views, key station.
All right, and then.
Tell it to YR or tell it to YR that you want it.
It's a great idea.
They can find you a couple.
Just figured.
Absolutely.
And then also the RVM, Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Program. Who would I talk to?
Jake.
Jake? Cause we would like to do something with that.
I would give him a for goes too.
Okay. Super, and he's the engineer?
Yes.
He was here, that was here. He's coming back. Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, yeah, thank you for that.
He hasn't been.
I don't, but again, if you wanted to share it, okay. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
It's gonna be a great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for.
Absolutely.
And follow up with Amber on all that.
Yeah.
Sign this one or do you have one?
I have one. Well, I've got, I'm just trying to. Can they go bristle in?
Something about public health, you know, about the middle of the, five hundred bucks, they got garbage done, they got filled in the ground, like just five hundred and they got sanitation. Fifteen hundred lots to take care of.
Just like you, you.
Scary thought, isn't it?
Good morning, Lillian.
Next on the agenda, we have a request. Then Chris, it's in the recorder, acceptance of recorder's letter of retirement.
I do appreciate all of the advice down. Twenty-six years. Very proud of you. Thank you for everything you've done for us, Lillian. There for a while, it was pretty hard on the ATVs and getting all that in, that you did a great job. We're just making thousands and thousands of dollars. I think we sold fifty some already.
Okay.
That we started in September.
So how long is it gonna be before the switch grabs that, right?
I don't know. Soon.
Right.
Well, I think it failed the lack of motion and second.
I'm not gonna make the motion. We have said.
That's just both of them there.
Yeah.
We didn't accept theirs either.
No, we didn't. Yep. And it didn't make any difference. She was gonna be done.
Yeah. Well, I will make the motion to accept the letter of retirement.
You're gonna stick it out, not till the end of the month? You're gonna.
January thirty.
I know, you're gonna go through January? I told her.
Yeah, but she, I felt very comfortable leaving, quite up to her.
Good.
With regret, I will second this.
A motion made and seconded to accept the resignation letter of retirement. Our recorder, Lou Anne Christensen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one three. No, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
We've been fortunate getting off of money and paying, getting things paid for.
Did you tie see?
Is everything that you've had in your office now? Okay.
And Lori has gone through a wonderful, that they have missed, and John was a really big help getting them back here to receive.
I'm using what a letter does on your candy journey.
Cause they just kept, but it's. Amazing. I just wanna make sure you guys were aware of like the modernization of paying. I know that, but I talked to DC from our stuff that they haven't moved on that. We have not had a fee increase since. I think, you know, the state needs.
Surveys have been that way since at least the nineties.
Well, I told Dave the other day, I said, you know, if you don't throw them, the horses bug, it goes to the point. So I says, can we get out of that era pretty soon? He says, I get your point, but I said, I mean, how long do we drag this out? Every year, you know, it just keeps going over the. And I also told him, I says, we don't need anything put back on the county. State can't do it, leave it alone. He goes, oh. I said, well, that's the only way you get to reduce taxes and we get to raise them. Just kinda snickered.
In nineteen eighty-four, I think, I went from three to five dollars a page.
Hopefully the increase will let us keep some of it, you know, all good.
It's kind of like, like Jill says, you get ten dollars for every renewal of, um, driver size is seven dollars. Ten dollars. No, it's seven dollars. What? What is seven dollars?
Thirty-two or thirty or whatever, yeah.
Pretty sad.
They reap us.
Yeah, but keep our taxes down.
Okay, thank you, Lillian, very much.
Being mobile home lady.
Yeah, how about that? Do we need a drum roll? Yes, you do. Is this our last one? Well, I'm trying on one more, but I don't think I'm gonna have enough time to get it done. You know what? You're not gonna leave until that last one is done. Well. Just, just a little background before we go on to the one we're gonna debate if you've got a minute. Um, I started this in two thousand and eighteen when I became treasurer.
This one?
Uh, no, well, all of it. I had ninety-nine county health tax sales. Eighteen of them did not go over to the solutions program, so there's no taxes. I don't know if they were just that far gone, but they were in my file. Eighty-one active tax sales, county health tax sales. I still have twenty-five active tax sales, but I have gotten fifty-six of them abated during this time. And you know what, Jill? This is what us supervisors rely on, because when you say the county's got so much money, but we don't. No, you're never gonna. This, this is why it's so important. Right, you have tried to get this back to. So out of these twenty-five tax sales, nineteen of them are mobile homes, six of them are property. Seventeen of these mobile homes are at that, uh, country estate that I just ran out of time and never got up there. Josh was always gonna take him for a little ride and you're gonna go up there and check it out. It just didn't happen. There's one of them at Costello's Trailer Park in Melbourne, and one at Timber Ridge, which is now, it's changed names several times. Uh, that is also county health. I have three properties in Melbourne, two in Henderson, one in PJ. One in PJ, in the flood, it will probably, the lady that I was working with, that thought maybe this was something she wanted, she passed away. So the two in Henderson are the ones that we had talked to Joe George about when, uh, what was that called? What grants that called, or two health? Yeah, I think right now. But that, that was two of them that we had thought about, uh, having them in and, and they were gonna tear down through this grant. Cause they have mobile homes on it. No, these are, these are property. This, these are two brick buildings and.
It was called Brownfield.
Yes, Brownfield. I was gonna say brownstone, and I knew that wasn't right.
Brownfield, we was parked her down the old elevator in Melbourne and.
Yes.
I don't want to have it for the program.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it had set aside that people were gonna come and you guys, I know you definitely had said you wanted to go with them on this, on this little excursion, but, um, so we are getting there. We're just not where, where, where I wanted to be before I left. But, you know, we're getting there, so. And two of the properties, two of the three properties in Melbourne, uh, one of them FS has their equipment parked on. Uh, so I had thought once about trying to reach out for them. It's just a little slippery. The owner was Dee Anderson. Yes. And so, but, uh, I will certainly pass this on to whoever picks my place and see if maybe we can, can finish up on that. And she knows. It's very time, it's very time consuming. It takes a lot of time to get. Absolutely. This stuff done. But it's so important. Yeah. And it's been shoved in the drawers a little bit too long. It has, so, so we are making progress, but we're just not quite there yet, so. But I did talk, uh, to several treasurers. I talked to the county attorney, I talked to the state. Um, the one that I'm going to bait is, uh, mobile home that is no longer there. It was destroyed years and years ago. It's a two thousand and thirteen tax sale. Um, just to give you a little background, I did, I'm running this off, so if you needed to look at numbers and stuff, there's some information there for you. There you go. So it, it's been gone since twenty thirteen. Mm-hmm. Uh, he sold it and when they were taking it down the road, it fell apart. So not only am I going to, uh, ask you to abate the ten, the county health tax sale from two thousand and thirteen, but all the taxes from that point on, um, which a total with the tax and penalty is four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And of that, taxes were a hundred and ninety, or excuse me, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. Penalty is two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. And that penalty also includes the cost of when we do it for the tax sale and stuff we have to pay for four dollars in parts.
That's money we showed getting in for budget purposes that we'll never have.
You're not gonna see it, so, so, um, I recommend that you guys, uh, for resolution twenty-four, forty-eight, that you will abate. That you, we will get rid of the tax sale of twenty, twenty thirteen, thirteen oh one seven tax sale for nineteen seventy-one mobile home. The last known owner on it is Dale Henry Paulson. That is who I am billing, but he had sold it. When he sold it, it fell apart going down the road. And also abate all the taxes and interest from two thousand and thirteen up to twenty twenty-five. I just can't believe, what's even there? People gotta understand, these mobile homes are so important to come in and, and, you know, most people don't know to come in and change the title. It's, it's, and I probably didn't before I worked here either. I mean, you know, it, you kinda just. It's pressure, hook it up and pull it down the road to a different spot, so. I have a pulse of heart. Yeah, a pulse of heart and if you walk away, maybe, I don't know. Yeah.
Cleaned up, three of them just ended up in the county roads. Four ditches. The guy said, well, I, I can't move it. Yeah, well, you're never gonna move it. When the shell falls down over the wheels, slight problem.
Just there. Let the county worry about it. The people's tax dollars worry about it, right? Yeah, absolutely. That's when I say you gotta take on your own responsibility. So I second that, Jill, and thank you for finding this out. Now that they, the title has not been canceled. But they said to let go, to go ahead and let, let it go off of the tax rules, but we just still have to leave the, the title as an active. Problem. Tell, I can't find the guy that has the lien on it. I've tried. And I, and that's what the state says. You've done your due diligence. I can see your notes go back to twenty twenty where you've been trying to clean this up and it's just not happening. Well, he's probably pissed with it fell apart and he didn't have a. Well, and this, this gentleman, bless his heart, he just come in every year and said, why are you keep, keep billing me? By code, I have to bill him. I have to send him a bill. Yeah. He comes in, he assigned up. I had him sign something that, and had it notarized, that, that trailer is no longer there and so then I talked to a gal, but that's a lot of trailer. She said, no, just go ahead and go to report. Get it off the tax rolls. Leave your title active. And there we are. So altogether, that was four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Just that one mobile home, because over four thousand dollars. Wow. Good job. Thank you.
Three other. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-eight for a mobile home county tax sale that had been destroyed. We're valuing this at four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, right? We're valuing this at four thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars, right?
That's what we're making.
Any further discussion, questions? There ain't none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those who carry.
I do have one other thing I'd just like to say briefly for just a minute about, and I know it's not on the media, but I would like to come back next week for formal action, I have been talking to Patrick. Um, I need a new computer, uh, in my office, and we do a lot of scanning with the stock locator, and the scanners I have are Brother scanners, and they don't do the best job with the scanning, there is a, uh, what did you call it? It's a different brand, and it's a little bit more expensive, but at the time, I didn't have money in my budget, so I just went with the, the cheaper scanners, just so we could get it to work, so. Uh, and also, I was wanting to mount a new laptop for my office, so I'm looking at about fifty-three hundred dollars, and wondered if there was any way that we could use some of the, or part of the ARPA funds to, to help me get those things, since my budget has been, I don't have a lot of luck in my budget.
So, as of today, pending the requests below, we'll have ninety thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars of agents' cents left over to spend before December thirty-first, so.
And Patrick did say, if he got them ordered, if I come in next week at formal action, he can get them ordered, I will have them by the end of the year.
Well, how much was that, the actual amount?
So, you're needing a new laptop, fifty-three eleven seventy.
And a new scanner, and then you walk away.
I know, that's like, that's like, getting new furniture, and you're never gonna sit on it.
It's a little. Is this through the same company that Patrick goes?
Yeah, yeah.
So do we have forty-six hundred nine dollars and twelve cents after that? Getting there.
Already done?
Somebody will come in and try to scarf that. Why make a motion to give Jill her, oh, no, that's for next week, because that was a dumb for the agenda.
So don't get it away between now and.
Oh, I see what your book is, Dan.
Yeah, exactly, so, so, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to get a little.
The more we can get, the less tax dollars, the better.
And like I said, you know, I have not had, I have not spent one penny of ARPA money, this is the first ARPA money, actually, this is the first ARPA money we've been offered. So, um, there's just a few things when we.
Long story.
A long story, but, but, so I thought, okay, if we can at least get part of this, then, and then the other thing is, uh, the state will let us obtain new motor vehicle computers next July, and then they reimburse up to, I believe, it's a thousand dollars on this. So that will help with that, so, but, where, where all of them are just getting, we've got a lot of. Yeah, and the ones at, at the counter are, are ones that Patrick helps refurbish, and so we can take in our taxes and stuff, so. So, yeah, Patrick and Patrick, so we can get that net, and I get a warrant.
Get it on the agenda, make sure you visit with her to get an ARPA.
Perfect, perfect. Anything else, you got any questions for me or anything, or?
Thank you again for taking.
I thought your retirement party was wonderful.
Well, thank you, thank you.
You had a great turnout, Jill, and.
It was very good.
It was lovely.
Despite the weather, and.
And everybody gets a little bit nervous, but.
Yeah.
Daughter came from Des Moines, and it was so good to see her, so congratulations.
Thank you, that's so much, thank you. Official retired job, I go to Des Moines and watch the boys in January.
She said she was gonna get her kids in. Well, what an honor, they get to go to the inauguration. I tell her I wanna reshoot in the fifth, in the second.
Yeah, that's quite, yeah.
Quite an interesting.
Yes, yeah.
So, good to do.
Off, nobody else has anything?
All right.
Get out of your hair, and let's move on to the next person.
Okay, thanks, Jill.
All right. Go ahead and. Work through your process here.
Yes, please.
Again, that we have resolution twenty-four dash forty-six to appoint deputy auditors in the auditor's office.
So I already have, Jolene is already, um, one of my deputies, and then, um, I would like to appoint Katie to be my second deputy. And then the resolution just states what Elizabeth's current salary is, so the only one that would be receiving a bump would be Katie, which is my pleasure.
I would make the motion to approve the appointment of the deputy auditors, resolution twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-four forty-six.
Well, I have definitely had Amber, those girls were pretty hard in that office, so, kudos to you to have some good girls to be with you.
Very fortunate.
So with that, I will second that.
And a motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four dash forty-six to appoint deputy auditors in the auditor's office. Put their names in, or?
Uh, yes, so.
Okay, you'll put their names in a minutes.
Yep.
Jolene and Katie, right?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those who carry. Hey, approval to advertise for universal clerk position.
Actually, I don't know if I actually need approval to advertise it's in my budget to have one, um, I'm just filling it vacancy, but I wasn't sure of the process, so.
Right, you put it in the paper for two weeks.
Yeah, I will, yeah.
That's something we've always, I mean, when they're short of jailers, we just, the jail, we get tired of Josh, we need to get tired of Josh, Josh get tired of coming in, and we get tired of putting it on the agenda every week, so it's just a, it's a being.
And that's kind of what I thought, once I thought about it, it's more, you know.
It's a formality. I'd make the motion to, uh, approve the application of a universal clerk position for the auditor's office.
And I second that to be put in the both papers for two weeks?
Motion made and seconded to approve advertisement for universal clerk position in auditor's office. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, those, those who carry. Permission to purchase laptops from board supervisors and auditors using ARPA funds.
This is a quote from CDW.
CDW?
Yeah. This would be, replace your guys' laptops and this one, um, in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-nine cents, and we would be using ARPA funds. And that's included in that total, that, earlier.
I'd make the motion to approve the laptops, uh, purchased by board supervisor and auditor using ARPA funds for fifty-seven seventeen seventy-nine.
Is this to be replacing the laptops that we had?
Yep, yep.
And what's wrong with the?
Yep, they need it, so instead of taking it out of the future budget, what I had decided to use ARPA funds to get it done now.
Okay, and that was in the budget when we were talking about the ARPA, ARPA funds?
Okay.
Right, and I second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve purchase of laptops from board supervisors and auditor using ARPA funds for five thousand seven seventeen one seventy-nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those who carry.
And then lastly, the, uh, official approval to purchase audio video equipment for the boardroom using ARPA funds.
How much and who?
It is, uh, fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Is this the?
Yeah, I'm trying to get that.
Check it, it's the one part of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that report. Sorry.
No, you're good, I know you can, you can get support.
And we had talked about it several times, we were just trying to decide if there was enough, um. I can't find who it's from, but it's in two thousand.
That's okay, through, we can say through IT, Patrick's handling that, correct? I'd make the motion to approve the purchase of audio video equipment for the boardroom using ARPA funds for the amount of fifteen four seventy-seven thirty through our IT department.
Well, looks like half is there. Does he have to have somebody special to?
Yeah, he'll have an electrician come in and set up in the, to be able to mount it on that wall there.
And is that included in the fifteen thousand?
No. But he didn't think electrician would be very much, but he was gonna get a quote and let me know.
Okay.
But he thought he might have it in his budget just to do the electrical part.
Okay, good, because I was gonna say, is that gonna come out of the ARPA fund then also?
Uh, probably, probably come out of his budget unless it's, I'll talk to him a little bit more.
Okay, I second that.
Here, been a motion made and seconded, I, a purchase audio, video equipment for the boardroom, a price of fifteen thousand four seventy-seven and thirty cents, to help the IT, right? Done for with paid for by ARPA funds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those who carry. Hey, we're up to Miss Dog.
Sheriff Department's leader.
Yeah, at some point, I can't, he was, had a meeting, I think this morning, just work the lesson, and then he was gonna come down and.
We're gonna use them, which you have in the unit, too.
All right, good, we're the city user, too, we've been really happy with them. Sorry, I need your, I had a date on the top.
What do you need?
I just need permission to shred the city school election.
Yay! Well, I certainly would give you the approval to just sit and shred as much as you.
I'm not gonna shred it.
I would second that motion.
And that's the twenty-four Glenwood City School.
No, twenty-three, twenty-three city school election. Okay. All right.
A motion made and seconded, authorize shredding twenty-three, twenty-four Glenwood City School election materials. Any other discretion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those who carry.
Thank you so much.
We're on our way. After the snowplows showed up with the sand and salt, did it immediately help?
Yes.
Just a little correction.
Yep, yep, the, uh, well, we, to give you an idea, the very, and, that's the only time I really had any dealings with them. I, I caught them when they were filling up the trucks, um, I think it was seven-ish, uh, they, they came in, started filling the trucks. Um, we all kind of felt, kind of helpless just sitting there on thumbs, crash came out right up by Foose's Trailer Park. Uh, so, the other three guys went to that, I just went out to one ninety-fifth, because we had somewhere between four and six cars just sitting in the intersection, nobody could move, so I went out there. For being flat ground, I figured out pretty quick, there's still elevation there. I, I had, um, I had about a foot and a half between me and the ditch, being fully engulfed in the little puddle of water over there, because that, for whatever reason, they, they caught my tires on the gravel and stopped me, because I was done. But we got out there and, uh, sat there for a while, and that lady with, her car was overheating, so she couldn't run it. Um, waited for a ride to get there from Platsman, took a while. By the time we got over to two thirtieth, they had hit two twenty-first, and two twenty-first was thirty-five, forty miles an hour pretty comfortably. Uh, but by the time we got over that, to two thirtieth, they hadn't hit that yet, and, uh, that was a fifteen, twenty miles an hour absolute max. And, uh, you wanted to stay on the crown or on the shoulder, there was no getting off, but.
I'd pick my daughter up from high school, nothing I did, I just stayed, I had two wheels on that shoulder.
Yep, yeah, the gravel seemed to be fine, everybody was going gravel, um, seemed to be fine, I took, from one ninety-fifth, I took Eastman across to two twenty-first, and I said, once they hit two twenty-first, uh, there, no issues on two twenty-first at all. Um, but, when I turned off on to, um, Elrod, uh, Elrod hadn't been touched yet, and I turned the corner, and it was, and, and at five miles an hour, and I still had no control. Got pretty much sideways, and I just came to a stop, and then, able to back up just a little bit, and then get myself righted, and then I went up to two twenty-second, and just waited on the gravel for the, for the trucks to come. We ended up going down to the border to try and slow down any truck that was coming up behind Josh, when the truck was coming in. Um, and once the truck came by, I had, it was no issues whatsoever. Yeah, it worked out, it worked out well.
It's times like that, you're really thankful for gravel broken.
Oh, boy.
Because blacktop was just.
Yep, blacktop was super slick, but one ninety-fifth is, is concrete, and one ninety-fifth was as, as bad as any.
Yeah.
And it was a, the perfect storm, the only saving grace is it didn't rain more.
Yeah.
Um, because, but, I think at the same time, it was coming down so enough, every drop froze, there was no runoff. So, it was a nice even sheen everywhere you went. But, yeah, it was, uh, and if you looked at it, you wouldn't guess there was anything wrong. It looked like the road was fine, until you hit the brakes and hit the gas, and got yourself sideways or.
I don't think we got as much rain east of here, you know, the trees, the lines, there was, there was nothing that ever breezed, nothing accumulated on them, so, I think the rain pretty well went across the northern part of the county.
Yeah, it, it was, must have been line from about the twenty-four on the interstate across, so we didn't have anything. We had one call on fifty-nine for a rollover, but otherwise, we had no calls east of two fifty. But they went, uh, you go, like, Council Bluffs, from the fifty-six to the sixty-four was, uh, an ice rink, they were sliding into each other, and.
Well, I think, what did my daughter say, they shut down the, uh, interstate retina to?
G- retina to beyond, past York, wasn't it?
I think, I mean, big section.
Big, big stretch, yep.
Semis were upside down.
Yeah, and there was the box truck that dumped over down to twenty-nine or the twenty-eight south air, um, spilled its load all over the place, there was, uh, I know they had three semis up north, the Council Bluffs, so there's some big trucks that went in, but with just a lot of, they bumped each other, but everybody was, it was slow speed, though. You know, nobody was going crazy fast, the ones that were going crazy fast were just the ones that went out all by themselves. So, yeah, we had a couple that were, um, yeah, they'd slide off, they'd go through a fence, and they'd just turn around, drive back to the fence and leave, made, made reports the next day, so. But I haven't been back out on Elrod, I know there were a couple of cars in the ditch yet Saturday night, there's a couple of cars in the ditch up off of, um, so, there's one on two thirtieth, um, a couple of them on Barris, yeah, they're on Barris yet, that was in the ditch.
Sheriff, what's the rule when you see a car off the road, and it's there for a couple of days, do they put a caution sign within twenty-four hours?
We, we try to, once we see them, we try to just red, uh, yellow tape them, so that everybody, everybody know, yeah, right away. Just so that they, everybody knows it's been checked, there's nobody in it.
Okay.
Uh, but then, we try to give the, the vehicle owner some time, uh, you know, because it was in the ditch, and they don't wanna make a report, or, uh, you know, there's no damage, it's just off, they can't get out, or there's, an inexperienced driver doesn't want to try and get it out. Um, you know, they, we'll just leave it until they get, and then, you know, we wait, usually wait a couple, three days, and then we pull it out.
Got it.
Yep, um...
And then it goes to the pound?
Yep, yep, yeah, Brandon will hold on to it until somebody comes picks it up.
Got it.
Yep, and, and it's, uh, really, it's kind of at our discretion, I don't know that we have, we don't have a hard, fast rule, uh, because there, like, there's one on thirty-four, it's out there for three days. Uh, and I'm just like, hey, let's go grab that one, it looks mad sitting on the side of the road, we've given the owner long enough, and it was the morning of the third day we went, hooked it.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
But the unfortunate part about it is, is, you know, if eventually nobody comes and claims that, that vehicle, and this, that one on highway thirty-four was a pile. Um, you know, we'll probably end up having to do the abandoned vehicle paperwork and...
Did you know we were talking to Josh about putting in our own pound territory so we can get some money?
Fremont County makes a few bucks off of that every year.
I mean, why not, you got the space?
We just have a better place to keep them, so, no, we do.
Yeah, um...
We can make one of the county yards down there to...
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it would, we just have to make sure we have somebody that can...
More paperwork.
Yep, that can run it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's, you know, with the right spreadsheet and the right person running it, absolutely.
Another revenue win.
Yep, the, the hard part will be is like the abandoned vehicle side of it, you know, when we have, uh, one that comes out of a crash or an insurance company's gonna come pick it up. But you get one that's just sitting on the side of the road that's broke down, it's a five hundred dollar car, they're not gonna come get it, and then we got, we have to dispose of it, we're the ones that are... You know, uh, if you, yeah, if it, if you're figuring it's a, you know, thirty dollars a day for storage, if we keep it for a month, that's nine hundred bucks that somebody owes, they're not gonna come pick it up.
Then do we have the authority for car sale?
Yeah.
We can.
It's, it's a little bit of a process. Yep, yeah, it's a little bit of a process, we can do those as often as we want, we can do them monthly, quarterly, wherever we want. Um, usually it's, the tow company will have money against it, so they'll buy it, and it's usually for next to nothing, and that's just to try and recoup the cost that they have in it, and then we end up basically beating the storage fees.
They'll go scrap them, also turn the buck for us.
Well, yes.
Yep.
I just think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I would have to do a little bit of research it, because I know, yeah, if, if the, if the ground, ground's there, the, the hard part, you gotta keep people from wanting to break into them. Um, so ideally, you know, it's had to be fenced, um, and then...
Or secondary road yards fenced.
Yep, and then, then it's a man, matter of, you know, who, who's gonna go open up the, the cage to let the, let the vehicle out? How long does it take, ideally, you know, if it's just a five-minute process or ten-minute process, that's okay, but if all of a sudden you're looking at tying up a deputy for an hour just to go release a car, that's kind of a pain, but... There, there'll be, there'll be some costs involved too, so we'll have to kind of weigh it out.
There's still be creepy money ahead, don't you? I mean, it, it just seems like, like Connie says, Fremont County does that.
Yeah, yeah, on the ones that get picked up.
Yeah.
You'll lose money on the ones that don't, but I think it's, it's also, um... It's not a true cost, it's taking up space, and then...
Right.
You know, it might take you six months to get...
Yeah.
If, you know, clearance to get rid of the thing.
If it's sold for scrap, I mean, they're still worth three fifty to six hundred bucks.
Yep, yep, but then some of that will have to go back.
Oh, yeah.
To, to the tow company, you know, if the tow company says, hey, there's a hundred and sixty bucks for us to get that thing out of there and tow it to six miles back to your shop.
Yep.
Then we gotta write a check to them, and it's, it's gonna be a matter of us making, I mean, it's gonna have to be a good, good record-keeping process.
Yep.
Got it. It's just a...
Yeah. That'll be something to consider.
Yeah, I had no, Josh had told you about it.
He has not.
Okay.
But...
He has not got to do it with either.
Right, right, we, it seems like really we, we, I'm, the more I find, the more I'm finding out is just along the way as we run across something, oh yeah, should have mentioned that, you know, type of deal. And it's no, no fault of Josh's, it's just that we've got stuff going on and we're doing what we're doing, and the next thing you know, oh, forgot to tell you about this. And like this, not talking about a tow, tow company opportunity, yeah, you know, Brandon, I'm sure, over this storm, uh...
He'll do well.
He did well, yeah, and he, he got two cars this morning on that crash at, at I twenty-nine, thirty-four. God bless him, because I, I was sitting at one ninety-fifth and Eastman waiting for the, the brother-in-law to come pick this lady up, and, uh, he came wheeling by, he said, needing any help? Like, no, I said, if you wanna just go hang out at the house for a little bit, I'm sure we'll have some calls in the morning, because you got about ten cars out there somewhere that you're gonna have to pull out, and he goes, yeah, that's my plan.
Did he have chains on?
He did not, he did not, I...
Really?
Yeah, but you know, those, that record he was driving was heavy.
It is.
And, and he's a good driver, he's smart.
Yeah.
Doesn't, you know, like you say, get the wheel off on the side and, and, and keep yourself upright. He's a good kid.
Like they do in California, they have a flat tire on the roadway out there, especially one-on-one, they just stop it close to the ends as they can, throw their flashers on. Maybe a half hour, forty-five minutes, here comes a tow truck for a wrecker, and they pick them up. Drag them off to the nearest gas station or wherever they get a tire fixed, because there's no room to get off.
No, you, and you don't want to be laying on the ground behind your car.
No.
Trying to get your spare tire.
It's, it's totally different out there.
You don't want to change your own tire?
But you just don't want to be, you don't want to be laying, yeah, you don't want to be laying out there on the side of the road. They drive fast out there. Hmm, yeah, yeah, they're, what are they, twelve lanes wide now and a couple there?
Instead of being in the right lane, our bus driver, our bus driver made two trips one day, got off on the right deal, and when he turned off, got in the wrong lane, he couldn't get over, so he goes around the block.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, it's the, the traffic out there, and I just wonder sometimes about thirty-four, the amount of traffic that we're getting on here, unbelievable.
I'll tell you what, this morning, I, it's been a while since, I was, when I was working in Council Wuffs, you know, I would always run two twenty-first up. But like this, and I, or I would leave early enough that I wouldn't see the traffic.
Are you?
Well, I, I, I hit a couple of...
I hear those.
Saw, saw a lot, a lot of people this morning.
Hi.
You're ready up here.
Oh, already, wow, geez, I am up. Okay.
We just want to give you VIP.
Okay, well, that's wonderful, it's great. Okay. Okay. Bonnie doesn't want to join her?
You scared him off.
I know, I am so scary, aren't I?
You are scary.
Okay. Well, good morning, and thank you for letting me come and talk today, I appreciate it. Um, just want to thank you for your continued support, um, for everything that you do, it really helps us. No.
I think he just had a quick laugh.
Do you have any...
Wait.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So how was your Friday night?
Oh.
Did you have to get on this, I see Rose, we were just talking about the donations.
No, 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 it was like...
Did you get everybody out?
Yep, 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 so, yeah, they canceled all the school stuff, and, yeah, but it didn't hit till later, which was nice, everybody got home by the... Yeah, so the big thing on Friday was we had a major gas leak.
Oh, that's right, I did hear that on there.
So we had to evacuate, start building and, and, um, yeah.
Sir, you don't want to go, you can come up here and visit with us.
Sure.
I'm, I'm reading your switch.
Oh, Kelly, yeah, excuse me.
What am I waiting on? What are you getting these guys together for? I don't know.
So, yeah, that was our big, that was our big deal.
And Glenwood have an activity, why would they ever do that, and of course, they got caught in the ditch, did they not, the buses?
I don't, I don't hear that. Oh, they had it, oh.
I, not a smart.
All right, well, I'm waiting on you.
All right, let's hear it. What do you got?
Okay, well, I'll just start my deal again, so, I just want to thank you for your continued support, um, on the epilepsy, community action, and everything, um, that you do, and we are requesting the same amount, which is four thousand dollars.
You just never go up.
Thank you.
Like, what, a thousand? Yeah.
Well, you can give me more.
No, I know.
Okay, well, that's for five thousand, okay, five thousand, that's, that's, okay, give me five thousand.
What you guys do for the county?
So, yeah, go ahead, five, um, and so, it's what we do with that funding, it helps with our outreach services, any administrative or indirect costs, local match requirements, or any other programs. Um, funding needs that we might, um, offer to, that serve Mills County residents, so we do appreciate the money, um, so, yes, okay, five grand, I'll take that. Um, I would like to thank Carol, um, for being our board directors, and she does such a great job, and we're truly gonna miss her, and she provides so much support, um, for us, and, uh, which is very much appreciated, because, you know, sometimes our jobs are hard, and, and she's extremely supportive, so... Yeah, so anyway, we do, I do have a packet of information in front of you, and this, these are the services, um, that we provided during fiscal twenty-four, um, for Mills County. So on page one is just some client, oh, and I'm sorry, this is Kelly Malbert, he's our weatherization director, um, and he comes a lot with me, I'm sorry, so I shouldn't introduce you, I'm sorry, Kelly. Um, he comes every year, so you've seen him before, so he always comes with me, but, um, page one just has some client demographic information, we served, um, two hundred and seventy households and over six hundred and eighty individuals. Of those individuals that we served, uh, thirty-seven percent were single person, sixty-three percent had an income below a hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, and fifty-three percent were on a monthly fixed income. Um, forty-four percent were between the ages of eighteen and fifty-nine years of age, and fifty-three percent, um, the households, uh, rent their home. And then if you want to move on to services, on page three, we have Head Start, um, which you know promotes school readiness for children ages three to five, and low-income families, um, by offering a variety of services, educational, nutritional, social, things like that. We have one Head Start classroom in Mills County that operated in Glenwood, which served a total of ten children, um, but as you know, our new classroom, um, is now located at the Switch Center, um, in Hastings, and it's a great fit, and we were so excited to be there, and we opened in October, and, um, I think we're, I think we have twelve children there right now, so it's super, we are really excited to be in that center. Um, in fact, um, we are, um, planning on moving our outreach center there, um, in late spring, so, so we're, we're really excited, and it's gonna be literally right at festival, which will be great, so, it'll be nice. Um, that's the plan anyway. We also have Early Head Start, which provides, um, some for infants, toddlers, and pregnant women, and their families, and we operate at home-based option, and that option served a total of five children. And then we have Childcare Resource and Referral, um, that program is able to assist families in selecting childcare that best meet their needs, they also, um, work with, um, centers and providers to participate in a quality rating system to improve their overall quality, we provide trainings, we work with communities to help find, um, childcare solutions. And so, um, the past year, there was an eight percent increase here in Mills County for childcare programs, and an increase of twenty-seven percent in total spaces, which, um, that was one new childcare home, so which is great, because that's not the trend we're seeing, so it's, you know, huge decrease, um, across the nation, but actually in those towns. Um, childcare and adult program that promotes good nutrition and positive eating habits in children who are a part of a registered family, family childcare home, we had seventy-seven children who were enrolled at four home care providers. And then weatherization, what Kelly operates, um, this just helps low-income households increase their energy efficiency, put their homes and save money on their fuel costs, and we have two houses that received over thirty-three thousand dollars' worth of services this past year. And then, um, Live Beef, which is our low-income home energy assistance program, um, that's designed to help low-income households pay a portion of their eating, eating bill, and we had two hundred and twenty-nine households receive assistance of over a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Hey, Wendy, yeah, go.
Yep.
So, how many times can they...
Whether it's...
Yes, is there, is there a limit?
Yes.
Yes, right now, we go back to two thousand and three, and there have been weather hikes before, but we hope for measures to, if they've been insulated and they got newer furnace, we have a CER rating, they got a savings to investment ratio. So if they got newer equipment, we're not gonna be able to do their house, so, and all we do is weather the station, we don't do gross, we don't do... So if they done it prior to two thousand and five possibly, but after that, in terms of, we're gonna be able to do something.
So it's basically once a year, or once...
Every, no.
Right now, if they, if they were done before two thousand and three, we can do anything after, right now, we can't.
Because it has to be a minimum of like fifteen, fifteen.
Well, it was back to ninety-six when we ended up, but newer homes, if, if they're insulated, that's the biggest thing we do.
Got it.
To get that investment ratio.
So now they can't, like, just, no.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Good question.
Well, they can be done more than once, we have houses that were older that have been done.
Okay, yeah, good question. So then we also offer crisis money, or ESIP, um, that helps with furnace replacements or repairs, or service continuity disconnects, things like that, and we assisted forty-four households with almost twenty thousand dollars for that. And then, um, our food pantry, so that helps households and individuals that reside right here in Mills County, and they can access the emergency food pantry up to six times per year. Um, we assisted ninety-eight households and two hundred and sixty-eight individuals, that was an increase of eight percent from last year. And then FADS, um, that works with at-risk families who are at, um, one hundred and seventy-five percent or below the federal poverty guideline, and also have children, um, specialists provide comprehensive case management services to help meet their goals, and we have nine families that benefited from that program in Mills County. And then page seven just shows the program dollars or the value that go either directly to the clients or local vendors, which totaled over five hundred and seventy thousand. And then page eight shows the admin and delivery costs, um, we want to keep our admin under five percent and our delivery under twenty, and we accomplished both of those things, which is good. And then on page nine just shows a summary, and as you can see, over seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars' worth of services were provided by West Central from Mills County. Um, and again, we have to, we're self and a board director, just want to thank you, um, for your continued support, so, very much appreciated.
Those are some outstanding numbers, isn't it? Unbelievable.
Okay, yeah, bye.
I think that's a must.
Uh, and I just want to present Carol with a, um, plaque for all of her wonderful years of service, and it just says, "In order to Carol Bennett for your loyal dedication and unwavering commitment, thank you for your significant contributions for our goals, your indispensable support of our mission." So, just this, yes, so, yeah, thank you, thank you very much for everything, and, um, we greatly appreciate it, so...
Came from our heart, you know that.
Oh, I know, so, don't worry.
County MENT on left, okay.
Yes, yes, we've done amazing work, so, you know, and, and nobody supports us, um, because we lose, because Carol's been on the years, um, I just really appreciate that, so...
Well, we were not hardly spoken last weekend. But something like this, I honor, thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, that means a lot to me.
Thank you, so, appreciate it.
My heart was at least there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're on it, so...
No, we really, we really appreciate what you do for Mills County and the rest of us, you know, uh, for what we invest, the four thousand dollars will be given in return.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, um, so, yeah, and again, uh, we, so, our outreach office here is during two, um, two days a week, um, we're combining our Fremont and Mills, we had our outreach to long-term, outreach to long-term decided to leave and, and take a different position closer to home, and so we're combining two of the offices, just because we have to do the budget and, and constraints.
I'm still here.
And so, two days a week, Kathleen Sawyer, who runs Fremont County office, will be coming in two days here and three days there, and, um, and so, yeah, I, I, you know, we publicize it, I know it's gonna be a change for, for residents, and, and I think it'll take some getting used to, and, and they'll get used to when we move again, you know, to out in Hastings, and I know it's not gonna be as convenient, uh, I know, I was like, what? It's a better fit for us, and safer, and just a lot of different things, and having it with our Head Start will be really, I'm just happy for those things too, so, um, yeah, a few changes, um, but, but just really, again, just appreciate the support, and, and, um, know that we're trying to really be here to help, and, and, you know, where I keep season this year has been, um, a little hectic, just with the change from state and the data, so, people had to adapt to that. It's not our fault, it's when the state, but, um, right, you know, we're doing everything we can to get people and get them, um, signed up, so, be quiet, just so, you know, yeah, all right, any questions on anything?
So you were in Harlow's, where you're based?
Yep, I'm in Harlow, yeah.
Are you gonna move everything to Switch over here?
No, 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 just the outreach, that's just the Mills County, yeah, just the outreach, so, no, no, we're not...
Can't move out of Harlow.
No, 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 I, no, so...
Happy you're...
Yeah, sure.
I actually live in a town outside of Harlins, Earl, Iowa.
Yeah, he works in Harlins too, so.
Got it.
But, yeah. Harlins is my town. My graduate.
Yes, so, yeah.
You could have said poorly.
Oh, geez.
Where's the phone election on this on the agenda, Super Just?
Okay. Okay, that will be great, I appreciate that, so, yes.
I have pictures with.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I'll read them to you.
No, pictures.
Here, I'm sorry, here, I. No, you can be in the picture.
Yeah, I think so. No, no, I, I'm just offering for you to be in the picture.
Can I get it, Kelly?
I can.
Okay. Speaking of, yes, oh, yeah, we will, we can.
Wow, that is beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you anyway. Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.